I'd like to call the March eleventh, twenty twenty five regular county council meeting in order at nine thirty. We'll start with the land acknowledgement. We acknowledge Athabasca County is located on First Nations Treaty six and Treaty eight traditional territory. We respect and honor all First Nations, Métis and Inuit peoples' connection to these lands, their history, language and culture. So the first item up is the agenda. Um, I would like to make one note um that is my, my mistake and I would like to correct. Uh, twelve point five, which reads section seventeen, one of the FOIP Act. It actually should be uh FOIP nineteen one. Uh confidential evaluations. So that's that one correction there. Are there any additions or deletions? Nobody? Counselor Hall, additions or deletions?
Um, I think we need to add seven point one. Seven point two does not have a complete recommendation, so that has to be on the agenda. Six point one is by law. The delegations four one and four two.
Um, may I run through all of those that I've?
Sorry, you're asking, so I?
Yeah, additions and deletions first, and then I would go through um.
Okay, then I, I would also propose we delete five point one as it does not meet either section thirteen four or fifteen seven of the procedural bylaw.
Okay. All right, so deletion of five point one.
Yeah, it's, it's ineligible to be here.
Understood. All right, I don't think there's anyone opposing the deletion. Okay, so the items uh will, as per the um procedural bylaw nine point eight, we'll go around the room and uh. Ask counselors, of course, which items they wish to uh debate. The uh items that I am aware of so far are two point one, four point one, four point two, six point one. Seven point one, seven point two, seven point three, eight point one A. Eight point two, eleven point one H, eleven point one J. Um, and then, of course, all of number twelve, twelve point one, twelve point two, twelve point three, twelve point four and twelve point five. Are there any further?
Did you say seven point four?
Seven point four, I'll add that. No, I didn't, but thank you, seven point four. Anybody else?
I wasn't cuz seven six is to bring it back in the future and seven five is.
No, okay. I'll run through those one more time. I'll run through those one more time, two point one, four point one, four point two, six point one, seven point one, seven point two. Seven point three, seven point four, eight point one A, eight point two, eleven one H. And eleven one J. And come to think of it, I just wanted to double check um seven point six. Um, no, that's fine. Okay, thank you. Is there anybody else? Go ahead.
I'd like to put down five point two.
Okay, five point two. All right. Anybody else? Go ahead.
Just confirm we're deleting five point one?
We're deleting five point one, yes. Are we all good? Do we have a motion to accept as amended? Counselor Chamzik would like to accept the approval of the agenda as amended. All those in favor? Uh, no opposed, so that will be eight and oh. Thank you. And we have uh our delegates starting at ten AM and another one at eleven AM, so we'll move to five point two. On your agenda renaming Baptiste Drive to Pack Beach Drive, page forty seven of your agenda package.
I uh put that one on, just I'll do the recommended motion. And I put it on there just to uh say that, that it's awesome to see that. It was sent out, uh great work, sent out, all the people were, were asked what they thought. And it sounds like it was a unanimous decision, seventy-five percent of the people got back. That's uh, that's great, it's great to hear, so. I just wanna say thank you very much for that and, and I'm sure there'll be a few people happy with that. Thank you very much.
Awesome. Those mail-loads are super effective, everything. It's fantastic. All right. So the recommended motion by Counselor Minz is that county council approves the remain, the renaming of a portion. Of Baptiste Drive to Pack Beach Drive, starting at the junction of Township Road six seven one and Range Road two four one. And further to direct administration to install a road name sign. Go ahead.
Are we to assume that administration then will update Google Maps and the emergency services, the nine one one dispatch, all of those things?
Uh, yes, uh, through the chair, yes, it's actually in here that we will update everything that's required.
Okay, are we ready for the question? No further discussion, all those in favor? And opposed, eight and oh, thank you. Alrighty, we move to uh bylaws, six point one, page fifty five of your agenda. The recommendation here is to give first reading of bylaw zero zero four dash twenty twenty five. Road closure north of northwest thirty-four sixty-four twenty west of four and south of southwest three sixty-five twenty west of four. And to direct administration to schedule and advertise the public hearing on April eleven twenty twenty five at nine thirty AM. For bylaw zero zero four dash twenty twenty five. Does administration have any? No, okay, thank you, go ahead.
I'll make the recommended motion.
Okay, Counselor Anderson would like to make that recommended motion. So we will go to first reading.
As follow-up?
Yep, go ahead.
Ask a question. When this item was brought to us the first time and went through first reading, was it sent to? The minister? Or, and just took too long to get here, or was there just a step that was missed? In the process?
Um, Madam Chair, members of council, uh, I believe a step was missed, so we did get first reading, there was a public hearing held, but the minister never did receive the bylaw. So uh, we have to start the process over. Um, so after granting first reading. Uh, going through the public hearing and then the next step would be to send it to the minister.
Yeah, that's great information to have, just if it was sent to the minister and they took too long, uh, this was an opportunity where we could. Raise it at RMA and say, hey, this process needs to be expedited, so, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Counselor Hall?
Two, two questions, I guess, or comments. Um, well, before this gets. The, the presumption is that we're headed down a path to sell this sort allowance to an adjacent landowner. Will that sale come back in front of council before it happens?
Um, Madam Chair, members of council, I'd have to read through the, the policy uh for, for land purchases. I can, I can confirm that, uh, Counselor Hall and get, and we can get back to council.
And then, secondly, um, you know, sometimes I think we're overcomplicating things when, when I think about the first time this was presented to council, what really. We're looking to have happen is for the landowner to have control of that space and to be able to farm it. Why are we going through all the hassle of closure and public hearing and? Why don't we just issue a ninety-nine year lease and be done, and then the landowner gets effectively what they want, which is control of the land? And use of the land and the, the matter is resolved by Friday of next week. So I'm, I'm opposed to the bylaw, uh, after having some time to rethink it, I, I'm wondering why we wouldn't just lease and maybe admin has.
Yeah, um, Madam Chair, whatever disposition you wanna, if you wanna close it to the public, you have to go through road closure bylaw.
So anybody else? So if we're ready for the question, to give first reading of bylaw zero zero four twenty twenty five road closure. As well as to direct administration to schedule and advertise the public hearing on April eleven twenty twenty five for bylaw zero zero four dash twenty twenty five. All those in favor? And opposed? Seven and one. Thank you. And we move to item seven point one, page sixty-three of your agenda. Madam Chair? We, we need the bylaw for the, the public hearing, the public hearing? Uh, yeah, it's included in that, in that uh motion. Okay. All right. Alrighty, so seven point one under new business Township Road six seven one A. The recommendation is that council approve a budget allocation of two hundred ninety-four thousand dollars to facilitate the drainage improvements and other work associated with improving this portion. Of the roadway, Councilman.
I'll move that motion.
Thank you. Go ahead, Counselor Hall.
You know, we've often talked about making better motions and making motions clear, and thi- this is a motion that I think is not acceptably clear for passing at this table. Um, this portion of roadway defines absolutely nothing and nobody reading that could have any possible idea what that means. So. I, I wonder why we wouldn't further replace the words this portion of roadway with. Whatever the defined portion of roadway is, you know, beginning at the southwest corner of section eight sixty-seven twenty-three and continuing for. Whatever number distance we're, we're doing. But. Step back and look at that motion in six weeks and tell me what this portion is. Now, may, I know there's only, I think, one. Um. Six seventy-one A. But are we doing five hundred meters of it? Are we doing seven hundred meters of it? Are we doing fifteen hundred meters? I just don't think it's adequate in terms of. So, and because we don't have. I don't have a memory from a prior briefing from admin on the exact distance. Um, I think the motion is too weak to pass and we need to further define what quote this portion means. And I can amend it because I don't have the details.
Madam Chair, our apologies if council wants to table this, um, perhaps entertain a tabling motion, and we're happy to bring back some details at March twenty seventh.
Okay. Is that your satisfaction to table? Okay, you would like to table? Okay, Counselor Gerlock would like to table uh. Township Road six seven one A that council approved the budget allocation. And because this is non-debatable, we'll go right to the question. All those in favor? And opposed? Seven and one. Thank you. Item seven point two, page sixty-five of your agenda. This is a sponsorship request for Athabasca Ukrainian Folk Dance Club fiftieth anniversary. The recommendation is that council approves a level of sponsorship funding for Athabasca Ukrainian Folk Dance Club's fiftieth anniversary celebration. Showcase supper and dance and further to source the funds from the grants to organization budget. Is there a motion you'd like to recommendate? Okay, Counselor Minz is as recommend, as recommended.
This is an unclear motion once again, Reeve. Uh, could we have Counselor Min specify the dollars that he'd like to see done?
Okay, we'll go with the.
I, I could give you an idea.
Yeah. Well, I, I think it was voting where they're at, they're actually asking for two thousand dollars, so it'd be the silver, sil- silver level, isn't it? Or we can go with the gold level, it don't matter to me. I think we should. Okay, well, let's go with the gold level.
Let's go there. The, these guys have been around for fifty years, and I think if you do the math and say, let's give them fifty bucks for every year they've existed, it's twenty-five hundred bucks. It's not a giant sponsorship and it's not like fiftieth anniversaries come around very often. Although just uh to be a bit fun, I would amend your number and propose we go to twenty-five hundred and fifty. With the extra fifty representing optimism for their future, but also gets us to bottom.
Sure. Oh, wha- whatever.
Madam Chair, members of council, I just want to uh add that we purposely left uh that um motion a bit ambiguous. So council can add the dollar value and you'll see that in the following RFD as well. Uh, we didn't wanna make the decision, we wanted to leave that to council to make that decision.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Alrighty, is there any further discussion on the amount of two thousand five hundred fifty dollars? As uh the sponsorship level of a gold level plus? Or we're going to platinum, thank you.
Platinum.
Platinum because of the twenty-five fifty. Thank you. Platinum, all right. Do we have, do, we have that motion, okay? Um, you're okay with it? Please.
Moved by Counselor Minz that council approves a gold level platinum sponsorship in the amount of two thousand five hundred and fifty dollars. For the Ukrainian Folk Dance Club's fiftieth anniversary celebration showcase supper and dance and further. To source the funds from the grants to organizations budget.
Thank you. Did I hear gold and platinum? Yes. Okay, so we'll remove the words gold and leave it as platinum? Okay, so satisfactory, everybody?
Yep.
All right. There's no further discussion, are we ready for the question? All right, all those in favor? And opposed? One, seven and one. Alrighty, moving right along here, folks, to seven point three, page eighty-five of your agenda. And I believe this is the same as, as the last uh request is for council to determine that amount. So what this is for is uh sponsorship requests, twenty twenty-five Hockey Alberta U fifteen Tier Three Provincial Championship Tournament. The recommendation is that council approves a level of sponsorship funding for Athabaskan District Minor Hockey Association's Hockey Alberta Event. And further to source the funds from the grants to organization budget. Um, I believe their request here. And I'm not seeing it right away. Um. Was it how much? I'm sorry. Page eighty-five, thank you. Um, dun-dun-dun-dun-dun. It's not popping out at me. Bronze, so there we have, here we go, Dream Builder up to two hundred dollars, bronze, two hundred dollars and up. Silver, five hundred and up, gold, seven fifty, platinum, a thousand and up. Um, go ahead, please.
Oh, I agree. Excellent, and we have uh this in our review, but I would like to make.
Thank you. I'll make the recommended motion as a platinum sponsor as well for a one thousand. I don't have to make one thousand and one dollars, but uh one thousand. They're not making us do that. Um, I think that uh this is gonna, you, we're reaching a lot of people and a lot of community members. Okay, thank you. Is there anybody else who would like to? Way in here? So, okay, um, Counselor Capitanic would like to move the recommended motion uh to include platinum uh one thousand. One thousand dollars, okay. The council approves uh the platinum one thousand dollars. Uh, sponsorship funding for Athabaskan District Minor Hockey Association's Hockey Alberta Event and further to source. The funds from the grants to organizations budget. All right, there's no further discussion, all those in favor? None opposed? That's eight and oh, thank you. We're flying right through here, folks, seven point four, page one oh three. Of your agenda package. This is the um RMA Spring twenty twenty-five submitted resolutions. And I believe Counselor Hall?
Um, I think the uh, this is probably a long discussion and I noticed the delegation for ten o'clock walked in. Uh, I'm wondering if we want to.
Take a recess?
Move to the delegation. Earlier.
Sure.
If that suits you and.
Absolutely, um, if we can take a short recess, um, and we will uh come back to seven point three after our delegation.
Perfect, perfect. So the, we're here to talk about the Q three report and anything else that comes up. At the end of it, uh, I'm gonna be asking a little bit about our new planning for the new year. I know both Dennis and I will be planning for the uh new fiscal year here, so. We'll touch on that. Uh, I handed out the uh, a uh, just a uh presentation here that I drafted up here, normally would put it up for you guys, but thought this might be just easier to go through. So break-in enters was our first period that we're working on throughout the year. In the, the key things in this one here were during that third quarter, there were twenty-seven break-in enters. Uh, bringing the year-to-date to a hundred thirteen, we were, we're aiming to reduce that, we're aiming to reduce it to uh one hundred, hundred and fifty reported for the year. We're on track to actually exceed that, that number here uh for this quarter, as of the checking this morning. Of the twenty-seven break-in enters that happened, seven took place in the county. And uh. When we're comparing it from the, to uh the previous quarter, the previous uh Q three quarter. It's uh, we've had a fifty percent decrease in that same time period here, so it's a, it's significant work that's being done in that area here, and it's been uh. Um, a lot of it's attested to, which is the next one is the priority two, uh, we have dealing with habitual offenders. Some key statistics on here, we're twenty-three recorded interactions with our habitual offenders in the area. Twenty-one court-imposed condition charges were laid. And three of those offenders uh live in the county of Athabasca, or were charged here in the county of Athabasca. Uh, the, what this does, why, why that's important though, is it does demonstrate the ineffective crime reduction strategy. Shows that we're monitoring these guys, making sure they're not getting away with what the uh, with the uh same repeated offenses. As a matter of fact, this morning, that was one of our briefings we had, is they were gonna be, the guys were out today, looking specifically for these guys to be breaching and uh, and making sure they're held accountable as much, as much as possible here. I will say held accountable tongue-in-cheek. For community consultations, we are uh, the quarter was uh being winter time, we didn't have a lot of different uh community consulta- or community consultations or engagements. Some of the thing, highlights I put on the page here, we ended running the party program at the Edwin High, uh, Edwin Park School. That was very well received in partnership with the fire department, uh EMS were there, and then uh MAD was, was there as well doing, doing a talk. That was part of one of my new members uh projects that he had to complete, to complete his field training uh program. So, we uh to- totally expect this year to be a lot more in community engagements, we do have the musical ride and things like that coming up this year, so we're. We're gonna be planning for that stuff as well as our annual barbecue, we'll start, continue looking at, bringing that in. As far as staffing goes. So the way we're made up here is uh, we have fifteen positions, one being that me, this is staff sergeant, I have a sergeant now, whi- which I stole from Boyle. And he's currently on light duties, unfortunately, until the end of the month, he ended up injuring his shoulder here. I have two corporals, one's been seconded away on a special assignment right now, so I have an actor in that position right now. I have eleven constables, one vacancy and one on light duties, who should be returning to full duties uh very shortly here, within a couple of weeks. On my public service side, that's where I'm really hurting. I have one supervisor who has gone on extended leave. She won't be back for an unest- undetermined amount of time here, but we've got, we're getting help from Lacklabisch, they're sending people over from there, helping us out to make sure we're keeping the doors open here. I have uh three, what we call CR five positions, that's the uh, uh, that's a level, it's a, they just get extra duties in that, and a higher pay raise in that. So I have three positions for that, one of them's on maternity leave, one, we just got back from Wabaska, we had her on loan to Wabaska, she was actually gonna take a promotion up there. But decided that Athabasca was her calling, so she came back and uh, and is working here now. And I'm currently in the process of hiring one uh person for the CR four position, that's the entry level position at the detachment here, so we have somebody in the, in the uh. In the process right now and hopefully have that person up and going fairly soon here. That's what we're kinda looking at for staffing-wise right now. And to kind of round things off here, I'll actually leave this to the end here, if you've had any uh things you'd like to talk about. Uh, so we are planning for our next fiscal year here, other priorities that we wanna focus on. Some of the things I'm hearing is uh from other meetings I've done is habitual offenders se- seems to be working, that's an area that they want us to continue working on. And then uh instead of just specifically on break-in errors, property crime in general. Yeah, it was another area we could focus on here. If you're hearing anything from specific communities or, or residents that, that they wanna still start looking at. We ha- we'll definitely open that up, and I know uh Dennis has got a few things, he probably uh. Different, a different set of things that he's gonna be looking at as well on that, that front. So that's my presentation for you.
Awesome, thank you very much. Does anybody have any questions for Sergeant Hall? Oh, quiet bunch, you're getting off easy. Sergeant, please.
Morning, thanks for the invite. Uh, just a snapshot, uh, so I went from October one to December thirty-one. I apologize, usually in the package I break down the numbers to make sense. Maybe a snapshot, a uh. Little scrap for staff, so I didn't quite get to that.
A little scrap for staff, so I didn't quite get to that. So what I did is I broke down a little bit, just so you know, uh during that period three, what we were dealing with, so. Uh, over six hundred calls for service. I broke that down into approximately seven assaults that we attended. Um, and just so everybody's aware. Uh, what's happening with the crime rate? Uh, five of those were known to each other, so it's personal conflicts. Uh, two were uh resulting from fights with strangers, so somebody gets a little miffed on the road, we get called. Um, we did have four assaults with weapons or bodily harm, meaning somebody has some injury or there was a weapon involved. Um, no concerns. Uh, one had dealt with a two by four. Those two people were known to each other. Um. And a couple were just family member swabbles with injuries resulting. We did have uh an incident with a male that produced a knife to a couple persons and that person was apprehended, so. That we would consider a stranger on stranger and that was a circumstance. From what I can tell from that file, we did uh get a conviction in court on that and that was last fall. Uh, only had a look at one sexual assault and those were uh. Intimate relationship kind of deal. It wasn't stranger on stranger. Handful of uttering threats. We did uh also investigate on uh half of the medical examiner's office for human deaths. Uh, three, from what I can tell, were attributed to medical issues. And one, only one was a. We're concluding is a suicide, so and that was. In into the fall last year. Um. Reach of the piece, that was a bulk of calls we get to, we had approximately thirty and that is anything from somebody um causing an issue in the house that needs to be removed. Some kind of orderly issues. Um, break it enters. Just so you're aware, we did record boat for uh break and enter the business. What I did is I had a look at those files. One had uh remote storage lot fence was cutting the trailer uh was stolen. Uh, Caslad Fire Hall, uh remote oil east site. That was the flat lake area and then we also had the Buffalo Lake Fire Hall. So kind of vulnerable areas for us where it's not highly patrolled, not reported right away. It's something that we usually get called to after the fact. Uh, six cottage cabin areas. Um, one was up in the township, uh one ninety five area, one was in Buffalo Lake and three in the wandering river area. And then we also had the rural uh cereal church and hall. Uh, north side of Buck Lake there. Um. From what I can tell, it was just a somebody shopping for some very easy carry items, protein tanks. Lot of kitchen supplies and stuff, but other than that, not much damage reported to the property. Uh, seven residential B and E's, three of those were in Buffalo Lake, three in the wandering river area. And then one on the north side of Skelton Lake, those were when people weren't present, so obviously issues were. Lack of witnesses and reporting after the fact to us as well, so. Uh, online frauds. Was the bulk of our fraud reporting. It's good that we're getting reports. However, we only had about six, so we know that's a lot more out there. But uh we're hoping with the education campaigns and the media, a lot of people are. Either switched on to it or given us a call before they become a victim. Uh, mental health calls, we had about twenty. Those are people that were legitimately either um talked into uh extra help with family members. Or hospitalization where they were apprehended and then seen by a designated physician to determine if there's mental health issues that they need to cope with. Uh, mischief calls. Those are kind of a popery mischief is anything from damage to property in interruption with your enjoyment to property. So from what I can tell from those, we had a lot of those were damaged to gate, so people trying to access rural properties. They may have cut a lock or damaged the gate trying to get in just to see what's up the road. And that's reported after the fact, so a lot of that is minimal damage, but at least it's reported to us. We know where those areas are occurring. Um. And then some were damaged to vehicle, so uh I know in a parking lot, if somebody's got a steering call, it was damaged. Uh, probably would have been a stolen vehicle, but they didn't get it started. Uh, possession of stolen property files, we had a handful of those. Um. Some of those are, from what I can tell, we had a person that was arrested. Set of keys was found from a property that might have been broken to and then they have the property, can't prove the break in. But the property in their pocket, we can prove that it's not theirs. Uh, stolen quad we got with the driver. Um, they were apprehended on the quad. Pretty tough to dispute. It's not your quad and you're on it, so. And then we had some abandoned vehicles where we consider it possession of stolen property. We can't prove who brought the vehicle and dumped it. But it's uh it's one of those where we at least reunited with the owners. Uh, forty suspicious files. That means we determined there was non criminality, but at least we're getting reports to check it out. So we're still seeing a good chunk of that being reported, which is nice. Gets my guys out there. We might be able to be out in the rural area where you report something suspicious on your road. We might not determine anything suspicious. A lot of it is hunters in the fall, maybe sitting there a little too long, could be waiting for a buddy, but we check it out. Make sure everything's legit, whether it's guns or maybe somebody isn't casing your place. Uh, it gets us to those rural areas to fly the flag a little bit and that that helps as well. Uh, eleven stolen vehicles, five were in Buffalo Lake, one north Buck Lake area. Four in the rural wandering river area. Um, I kind of looked at the ones I'm wandering. We had a little bit of a spike in that. But I know we had a suspect from Lack Labish that was apprehended after. I don't know how many police pursuits, not involving us, but. Uh, that person was apprehended. I know that was a bulk of what was kind of going on in that influx area as well as North Lack Labish and some of the Athabasca area. So a lot of damage done by a very select few. And then we had a uh truck from the community grassland that was borrowed. Looks like from a driveway, but we did find it in my slot, so that that came home. I think it's a cheap Uber. Uh, we did have one fatal collision. It was a semi evolving SUV. Unfortunately, the SUV uh driver succumbed to his injuries and. From what I can tell from that and being involved in that, that was uh somebody trying to pass and just made a mistake, so. Uh, about a hundred and ten collisions we had that were reportable. That's about average, I guess. Uh, those are not injury, but your damage threshold is reportable. Um, it did go up to five thousand in January. So we'll see actually if it decreased a little bit because the reporting threshold used to be uh two thousand. So if it's five thousand now. You know, you had head leg busted now on a Ford truck, it might be twenty five hundred, so um we'll see if the the reporting does go down a bit. That's what I can see from a bit of a snapshot into the fall. Um, as far as community events. Our staffing levels were down. I was uh short a corporal, obviously, heard I had somebody steal somebody from me. But uh, no Gavin, Gavin was uh welcome support to Athabasca and he's gonna be a wealth of knowledge for both Athabasca and Boyle. He still helps me out a little bit. If I need to take uh some holidays, he'll come over and help out, which is nice. Uh, his position hasn't been filled. Um, still ongoing. We're looking at options and. Looking at candidates through the postings. I did have uh two constables vacant as well, so what I did with uh my. Corporals absence is I brought in our Buffalo enhanced member, had a meeting with the band and said that. Just duty staffing pressures, I can't have an enhanced member right now, so they're very understanding and letting me put that on hold. I brought that member in because he's very experienced, has the most service and he's been a good fit helping me out. With uh filling the supervisory duties while I continue with my job. Um. The fall months, uh, we were still pretty promoted in the schools. Uh, doing our regular checks, just uh reaching out, seeing how things are. Remember it's day, we. I think we would, every invite we got, we we managed to achieve, which was good. Uh, the schools had all their ceremonies participated. Uh, mainly me with uh at least another constable because of the shortness, but. And then the Legion, we put on a a pretty good um showing as well. I I feel those uh those community events are the some of the most important of the year that we have to. Um, show our support for sure. Um, Halloween, we uh had a bunch of fun. Community brought us. Truckload of candy and we were actually had the boys out on foot. Really intermingling with the kids uh twofold, just a good PR. With the kids and the youth and had a lot of fun and also just enhances that safety factor if on the streets and uh. Knock on wood, we haven't had an incident, so um we're really well received by the community. Um. How much else I can share from quarter three? I can dip into quarter four, but that would be kind of futile because then I wouldn't have anything to talk about next time. Um. As uh. Market said, we're looking at priorities into the into the new fiscal, but uh what I will be doing is reaching out like I always do and having in-person town halls. Um, probably push it into April, though. I know last year I. I tried in mid-March. And I found hockey season was really intervening in a lot of participations. We'll try uh for mid-April and then I'll be reconvening with some of the councils. Just to say what some of the priorities from the community are brought to us and then as well gives us time to um absorb what you're hearing as well. Um. My big thing is we don't want to shoot for too high. Um, just, we're not gonna have. All the staff to do everything, so we triage what we find is the most important. My biggest thing is uh visibility in the community and schools. And then on the traffic side, I feel it's very important that we work with Lee and all his staff as well as the sheriffs and the CPO, so I still want to keep that going, which. Uh, depending on how the summer goes with uh fires and stuff, we'll. Put everybody together and hopefully have enough to really get that community safety uh on the highways. Um, especially in the May long weekends and the long weekends into the summer for sure. So I have, if you have any questions, definitely give me a. Give me a question. Thank you very much. Does anybody have any thing they'd like to mention? Oh, my goodness. Well, you guys are getting off really easy today. Thank you so much for your report and how's the traffic side of the world going?
Uh, good morning. Yeah, thanks for the invite again. Always appreciate uh coming here and spilling my guts on the stats that we've gotten. Uh, so this is a bit of a snapshot from uh December first till February the twenty eighth. Um. Yeah, so I'll just get right into it. Uh, so in that time period, my members, uh, so there's myself and one corporal and one constable. Um, six impaired drivers in the area. Uh, one other criminal code uh file. Could be a prohib driver or something like that. Uh, we had uh five alcohol and cannabis seizures, so alcohol within reach or illegal packaged cannabis. Uh, twenty four seatbelt tickets were issued, uh total of seventeen distracted driving, so cellphone tickets. Uh, speeding and aggressive drivers, uh eighty eight tickets. And other tickets could be uh stop signs or insecure loads or anything like that. That was, there was fifty four tickets issued. Uh, my members also executed thirteen warrants, so if they conduct a traffic stop and the driver's got an outstanding warrant, then they'll execute it there, so thirteen of those. Um. In that timeframe too, we did uh twenty four operations, so that could be anything from impaired driving check stops to uh seatbelt or cellphone uh operations. Uh, typically in unmarked vehicles or what have you. We also did uh three hundred and thirty one mandatory alcohol screenings, so every driver that we stop or uh road checks there. Uh, under the mandatory alcohol screening legislation that was brought in in uh December seventeenth of two thousand and eighteen. Uh, we exercise that and uh mandatory alcohol screen every driver that we come in contact with. Uh, we assisted the detachments thirty one times, so could be with anything. They need backup or whatever, we've helped them out. Um, my members issued thirty four warnings. Um, myself, uh. Been paying some attention to the oil school zone in the last few weeks. Ashton might have seen me there in the morning. And that note, uh, the highest flyer was eighty nine kilometers an hour in the posted thirty kilometer an hour zone that I intercepted last week. So uh, almost triple the speed limit. Um. We've been successful with our uh eight road project, so that's a repeat offender and driver that's high risk to the public. Um. We did, uh, we do have an ongoing file, that individual and uh subsequently has appeared in court, but uh some of the charges that we had laid. For the driving offenses were uh dealt away on uh. See, pled guilty to other matters, so we're gonna keep that file active and um keep our focus on that individual. Um, currently incarcerated. Um, we have lots of training uh for my unit, the three of us on the horizon. Um. I myself have four training sessions in April, so I will be. Busy. Um, my corporal has set up a traffic safety committee. Um, I know he's uh emailed members of the public uh fire departments and other detachments and they're meeting tomorrow. Uh, just to get a general consensus of what the problems are and the problem areas, so we can maybe focus our attention and let our partners, sheriffs and CPOs. In on those uh problem areas and they can hopefully. Put their focus there as well, because with the three of us and I really don't count, I don't get out much. Um, it's it's been tough. Uh, wildfire season's upon us. Uh, it's gonna be here in a short while. Uh, myself was deployed last year to Fort Mac, so I'm sure my members and myself will be deployed at some point. Also, uh, the G seven's coming at the end of uh on the first week in June. Um. I'm suspecting that I will be there because I'm getting the RCMP motorcycle course at the end of April, so. I'm sure that they're gonna want me there uh leading some dignitaries. Um. Been in the uh Boyle School a couple of times in the last quarter here. Um. I did a uh talk to the grade six class about the day in the life of an RCMP officer and what recruit training was like and uh. They had tons of questions and some of them were pretty intelligent and made me think. Uh, just recently I went and did a drug talk to the Boyle School from uh for for all grades, so we did a. Uh, in session in the library uh on some new drugs that are out there in the schools. Uh, from grades one to three and then we did uh four to six and then we did seven to nine and then uh ten to twelve, so I did every class uh in the library there last week. And uh, I think that was pretty successful. Um, the initiative for March is uh seatbelt month, so my members are out there and myself included uh focusing on seatbelt enforcement. And uh, next month, April is uh speed enforcement month. Typically, the highways dry out and the snow and ice are gone and uh. Speeds tend to to elevate. Um. And just a snapshot of twenty twenty four. Uh, compared to twenty twenty three. Um, so. These numbers, uh, I mean, they are what they are, but they could be hindered by uh my members, I mean. We've had basically two full-time members on the road as opposed to years past. In twenty twenty three, I probably had, you know, four, five members, six members on the road. And uh, overall, the public is behaving, so um. Provincial suspensions in twenty twenty three, we had twenty three of them issued and in twenty twenty four, we had six. Uh, impaired driving, uh, in twenty twenty three. There was one. Uh, so that's a criminal charge and uh in twenty twenty four, we had four. So that went up a little bit there. But the rest all kind of went down, so uh seatbelt use, uh, twenty twenty three, we issued a hundred and sixty six tickets and last year in twenty twenty four, we issued a hundred and thirty for the year. Um, speeding again is down, uh, twenty twenty three, we issued seven hundred and sixty three tickets and last year we issued four hundred and fifty nine. Um. Distracted driving, so cellphone tickets in twenty twenty three, we issued ninety one. And in twenty twenty four, we issued sixty eight. So again, that's uh gone down. And traffic charges in general and other provincial charges, so that could be anything from stop signs or intersection infractions, uh. Disobey traffic control devices. In uh twenty twenty three, we had uh two hundred and eleven. And in twenty twenty four, we had a hundred and sixty six. And then other activities could be warrants and that sort of thing. Uh, there duties that we've done or tickets we've laid, uh, hundred and fifty nine charges and last year we did a hundred and twenty one. So overall was down, but uh again, that could be attributed to the monitoring public behavior as well as the low uh. Staffing numbers in my unit, so. Pretty sure that's all I have.
Awesome. Thank you very much. And again, does anybody have any comments, concerns, questions? You look like, go ahead.
I mean, a couple of them. Thank you all three for being here. I saved my questions to the end, but um. All all three of you have talked about the staffing shortages. Do you, can you share what the RCMP is doing to try to recruit more people to? To work in your organization or is there opportunities to get in front of job fairs at schools more or? What what needs to happen because it's a real, it's a real problem and we have positions available and we don't have able bodies to fill them.
You know, my my personal comment, um. I look at when I was being recruited and uh. I I I shared that with my members as well. Back then, um, he had lineup, but people wanted to get in, good quality people, um. Don't quote me on the stats, but I I believe back then it was about one and eighty actually made it in from the screen.
Don't quote me on the stats, but I believe back then it was about one in eighty actually made it in from the screening. So it was very difficult to get in. It was arduous. I joined at a time where you weren't paid to go to training. He didn't care. It cost me money to go. I still wanted the job. I see now where we're struggling to get qualified people that want to even apply. And I attribute that just to a lot of the societal issues, bad publicity that we've had over the years. With, you know, hate, police, police not being viewed in the positive light. I think we're going to see a bit of a trend upward, because the pay is finally catching up. Where we're making a decent wage, whereas before. We weren't even comparing to some of the people that were in the trades or any, any job that you can get that isn't as high stress. Or the commitment to move so much. I believe that. Our recruiting efforts. Are good. But it comes down to the individuals. So an area like this. Proponent for me to be out there and actually trying to attract people that live. And maybe work in the area already that maybe look for that life career change. I believe there is a good candidate pool of those people we could pull from, but I believe that if they're going to make that commitment to pull. The strings on, on some of their commitments they have in life already, there needs to be some kind of a carrot. Whether it's financial support or a bit of help to get to that transition where their family isn't disrupted. That, that way we'll see a lot more people wanting to come to those hard-to-staff areas. And let's face it, any place outside the cities, it's a hard-to-staff area. A lot of it is. Within the families as well. It's pretty tough for somebody to want to come to an area where there's limited opportunity, maybe for their spouse. Or some of their children, if they have special needs. Or I think that's a big proponent as well. So if you're going to be having to relocate to an area that's outside the city where. All of a sudden, you're losing your spouse's income. It's pretty tough. So, so I think there's a lot of internal stuff. Not just recruiting itself. But I, I think it took us such a long time to go down to the level where we're. Trying to come back up now and make policing. That much of a career that people will be willing to line up for it again. And that's all emergency services. You're looking at ambulance, fire. They're across the board. They're hard to staff just because of the stress and the toll that it does take on people, right?
Yeah, and I think historically, the rate of attrition is not being backfilled. So. Like when the three of us got in over those years, they're, you know, they're throwing through thirty-some plus troops a year, right? So if you're having a thousand people across the country retire. And you're filling it with nine hundred while you got a hundred vacancies. And we're hitting that, that, that time period again. So it just seems like every twenty-year cycle after people are retiring, we're just. It's, it's difficult to backfill those spots right across the country, or we're not just. We're not just in Alberta, we're everywhere, right? So that's, that's. Part of the problem as well, so.
What I will say that could answer your question as well here, Dennis alluded to it. So we at this are levels. We are out actively recruiting, doing. Talks with people that may be interested in. As a matter of fact, I have somebody who was my summer student this year. He's in the process right now to try and get into the RCMP. I know that the recruiting uses social media. They use their big events to come to. They'll be coming out to the musical ride this year. To do a recruiting drive as well. They are actively pursuing people to get, to come into the force here. It's the, and from what I'm hearing from Depot, is that the troops are being filled up again. And it's just a matter of time getting them through the security clearances, getting them through that six months of training, and then out to these different detachments. And that we're competing against, you said, we're competing against Edmonton Police, Calgary Police, all these other bigger bigness police forces. Everybody's hurting right now. For the membership right now, but the drive is there to get people to come back.
The other two follow-ups, I guess I had. Thank you for that. Like lots of my colleagues spend a lot of time on the road, and so I was driving the other day and I got passed by, you know, some crazy with a car that had. License plate cover on it. I just wonder if you can tell us like what the, what's the deal on these gray, bulb-y license plate covers that when the guy went by, I couldn't read the plate. At any distance. Is that allowed? Do you pull them over when you see them? Smash them?
Yeah, it's, it's not allowed. It's prohibited. You can't have anything covering the license plate. A lot of people say, oh, I put the clear lens cover on her just to protect it. It's, it's not allowed. There's actually a fine for that. Yeah. And also defeats, some of them can defeat the photo radar as well. So that's another reason that they're, they're not permitted.
I always hope mine will defeat photo radar online.
I will just mention my, my background is some traffic as well. I did part of my service in traffic. And one of the things that came out of usually stopping those type of vehicles without those plate covers, they're hiding for a reason. And it could lead into criminal, criminal acts that they've committed or going to go on their way to commit. So we do look at, make sure we get in touch with those people and. And deal with them properly.
Now, the last question I had was you, you. Had a really successful bust of stolen property not that long ago, just north of the river. Is there any? Is there anything you can tell us by way of updates on that? Or is it still kind of, and you know, you. At a point where you're starting to return property to owners or what? Can you provide us a bit of update there?
Absolutely. So we did charge the, the one fellow there with, with possession of stolen property. As well as revending the equipment. One of the, the revinning was, was taken off the table and the one possession charge was stolen property remains in there. The, all the property has been given back to the owners. They've been contacted and given back. We had close to two million dollars returned to people. And anywhere from Redwater all the way up to Fort McMurray, so significant area of loss. Where people were losing stuff. The investigations are still on the go. Fort McMurray now is. Is the lead on the aftermath of all of this, where things go from here. Athabasca's involvement here is only, is very limited in what we're going with that outside. Outside of our initial file here, so, but it's all been given back and it's, we have a lot of happy people so far.
Thank you very much, Councilman.
Yeah, I just want to thank all three of you for, I'm a huge advocate on going to the schools. And being, being in public there and. Gaining respect and, and giving respect to, to the kids is a great, is a great way to start. The advocacy to, to come on to the RCMP. So thank you very much for, for going out there and talking to the kids and. In around, in, in around the Halloween time and stuff like that. That's, that's, that's a great idea. Go out there and interact with them. So thank you very much, all three of you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Um, I just, thank you for coming today. I guess I had a question. It was kind of a follow-up to Councilor Hall's. Statement there about the north of the river. Areas and how. I guess if you've lived here long enough, you have, it's, some things just kind of become what I guess we would call common knowledge and you. Almost forget that you should maybe be reporting those things to your local detachment. So I guess. What would be some advice for us to respond to community members when they're, when they're speaking of? Say, potentially seeing. Crime, not maybe not actively happening, but seeing like the, the vehicles that may have been stolen, where they're. Put, when it just becomes like almost so common. It's like, oh yeah, so-and-so's got more trucks buying their property. How should we be encouraging our community to? To remember that that isn't just common knowledge for yourself.
Yeah, it's one of those things where, I mean, so a lot of these areas here, you know who's coming into your area, you know who's not. What, what is unusual coming, coming in there? So if you've got a whole bunch of vehicles that you've never seen before, actually heading into the area there. They might be up to something, they might not be up to something, but those are the kind of things that we really want to know. So we encourage people to report suspicious activity. And if people aren't feeling comfortable, actually come in for and put their name forward, there's Crime Stoppers tips as well. One hundred percent with that, that stuff there gets, gets to us and we, we look into every matter there. But it's so important that, I mean, the. The value of the information that we get from those is can't be understated here.
Yeah, like I've had experience with the Crime Stoppers myself. Situation where I tried to stop an ATV and it took off me, but I had the subject on my camera and dash cam. So I took a snapshot of that and put it out to Crime Stoppers, and the flood of tips that came in led to an arrest. And I, when I get the tips from Crime Stoppers, it just tells me the information. I don't see who gave me the information, where it came from, anything. It's just like, it's, it's John Smith. And that's it. Right? So I encourage people to use Crime Stoppers. It's very valuable and they can get cash rewards for, for stuff, right? So why not use it?
Awesome. Thank you. Go ahead, Councilor. Good luck.
Yeah, sometimes there's a. A little gray area when people don't really understand what constitutes. Load restrictions, like an unsecured load. Like is it, if something's level with the box, you're not showing over, but it's, it's loose in the box. Is that an unsecured load or? Or really, what are the parameters?
Well, it would really depend on what material you got in there. So, I mean. E- each situation would be, would be dependent on what's in there.
Some guys are on a, on a back road. They got a two-mile bail hall. And, and they don't really want to strap the whole load down and, and whatever, if they're not on the pavement, not on height.
Yeah, when it comes to hail, a lot of those loads don't require straps. You see them. Semi-trucks going down the highway with those, I don't know, they got thirty bales or whatever on there and they're not strapped in at all. It's just, and they're exempt from that stuff.
Just with the kilometer radius. So if you're going farm field, far field. Or within a. I can't remember what the kilometer radius is, but. So if it's a farmer just taking farm bales from the field to store at his place and it's down the road. There's no requirement to strap those, but if you're going from northern Alberta to Sal Hay down south, yeah, that's totally different. That'd be a commercial carrier then, right? So, yeah, and I think. Obviously, if the bales are falling off in the ditch, we're going to get called and. Still intervene, but they still have to be in a safe, safe fashion. You can't. Go down the road like the old days with the square bales going like this.
And negligence is negligence. And, and that's not permissible under any circumstance.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Awesome. Please go ahead.
Sorry, the other. Question that I made note of during your presentation, you know, there's been a lot of conversation about crime attributable to a few, maybe productive individuals. I'm, I'm wondering. What advocacy you need from us? Because it seems to me that in, you know, many of these cases, they're, they're home before you are after an arrest and. As a, as a citizen, it's unacceptable to me that, you know, you, you can do the job and do your job and catch them, and then they're. They're busy, you know, they're basically, it's, it's a minor interruption to their business and they're back at work. Right away. So what, what advocacy do you need from us? What help can we give you when we interact with the province?
We showed, we had some frustration, obviously, with the bail hearings. That's, that's where you bring somebody. For justice of the peace to determine what their release is going to be, if they are going to be released. Obviously, we have some input, but it is mainly dealt with. You know, by the Crown Prosecutor and Defense Counselor. So the threshold that I've been told is if you have no outstanding court matters. Or any conditions in place. So say you got caught with a stolen vehicle. But you just got out of jail three weeks ago for it. Well, you're not going to have any outstanding court matters, and you're not going to have any breaches because your conditions are already gone from those utter matters. So essentially. In that view, you will be released. So they don't really hold your criminal history, like. You know, you might have a ten-page criminal record. That doesn't seem to come into play as, as much as it used to. So I don't know how long ago that really changed that parameter, but I think it comes down to politics above me where. The incarceration rates might, might not be able to be handled by the system where jails are full. I've heard a lot of things where it's property crime. It's not a victim crime. So, you know, it's not involving violence. So I can see some of the points of view. But as far as the attitudes, I would say pressure your local representatives to really try to be advocates for. Keeping some of the worst of our worst in the system. That's what's going to probably do is, is the public pressure from their elected officials for sure.
I will just add to that. The, one of the things we find in these rural areas here are property crimes are a major concern. Violent crime is maybe not as prevalent in necessarily in some certain locations. It's still an issue and needs to be addressed. I would not say that, but property crime needs to be, in my opinion, taken a lot more seriously. And, and people need to be held accountable a lot more accountable for the, that behavior because it does impact everybody. And when we're talking about. You become a victim of brick and enter. You lose your, you could lose valuable items out of that. You maybe, you may feel like you become a victim from insurance companies because now you have, you have to deal with that insurance company and/or maybe you don't have insurance from that. And then you have to go back through this process into the court systems, then maybe that person's already gotten out. Or that person doesn't get the kind of penalty what was expected that from you as a victim in there. So it's a, it's a system here that. To me is, doesn't truly address the underlying behaviors. And I, I know that from my perspective here, I think. If you were to advocate on behalf of some change in that regard, that would be ideal. We are in, in this detachment here, in the Athabasca detachment here, we're looking at different ways to actually make an impact here and start changing behavior instead of just the catch and release. I mean, we can catch and release. We, I get stats in front of me here that I've got arrests upon arrests upon arrests. I'm sure these two have the same. And it doesn't change these guys' behavior. I have an individual who was a youth, now is eighteen years old. Not in this area here, but within my patrol area here. He went from listed as number forty-four in the province. Of offenders to now down to number twenty-one over this past year here. Arresting this individual is not. Change in his behavior. So I'm looking at a lot of different ways to make, make some changes here on that and behavior change. So I'm open for ideas as well.
Are there, are there ways that you can provide examples to us? So we're talking to our MLA. We can provide sort of anonymous examples, but say like this, these are the patterns that. That we're seeing, like what? At a different venue or a different time, can you give us some? Some help so that when we're talking to our MLAs, you know, Gene and, and Van Dyke and. We can say the, these are the kind of things that are happening to put some context on it for them.
Absolutely, absolutely. I can do that. I've done that for the town of Athabasca as well. Mayor Rob Blay. Providing us some statistics on how people are being released or why people were being released. No names, we can't, and obviously include that stuff there, but some real statistics here on, on what's actually happening here. And he's taken to the province as well. So I will have happily. Give that information over.
When it, it seems to me that, you know, the more time you spend dealing with repeat offenders, like if you pull them out of the system, now you've got. Time to address other problems, like it's. It's like. I don't know. Think you have my, a colleague could use examples. It's like having a nail in your tire and just continuing to fill it with air. Like at some point, you gotta. You've got to plug the hole, not just keep adding to them.
Yeah, the only, all that, what Mark was saying is the same thing. If, if they're out of, out of the community long enough. They can, A, dry out for some of their problems. Or at least be provided some support. That side needs to be addressed and there's, there's not much we can do. If they come back before. They're only in jail a week, well. They're still in that craving mode where their substance abuse issues are still rampant. And then they're going to go back to their circle that. Feeds their crime addictions as well, where their buddies are all in the same boat, where they might be four or five guys going around stealing vehicles. And that's all they know. How to make some money, so. And, and you have to realize when the drug trade, people aren't going with twenty bucks of cash all the time. They're bringing stolen property to get their addiction fed. So it's kind of twofold. They need to steal to feed their addiction and their addictions just governing over them. They don't care, so.
Thank you. Anybody else? Well, I, I think, as always, we appreciate you and your teams and all the work that you do and the challenges that you face. Some very difficult calls that you're, that you're also dealing with, and, and we really appreciate you being here today to share. All of the success that you do have and, and all the hard work that you are doing. So thank you so much for being here today. And we look forward to seeing you again real soon. Awesome, awesome. And, and we'll just take a recess here, folks, for about three or four minutes. Um. All right. Uh, well, we'll reconvene here. After our our delegation this morning, we have another delegation at eleven. So we are at uh seven point four of our agenda, the RMA Spring twenty twenty-five submitted resolutions. Page one hundred and three of your package, your agenda package. Um, and I believe Councillor Hall, you want to start the conversation?
I I added this to the agenda because I think it's important that council though, you know, have some discussion of these items in advance and that we have some um thoughts on what, if anything, we feel collectively or how we're going to speak so that we don't end up with nine councillors going off on their own agenda at the meeting and uh at the RMA. As I so I was hoping that you would lead lead us through them and talk about each one to the extent that council wants to. And when I looked at them, I think the the lens that I was trying to look at them through is number one, is this a top ten critical advocacy issue for all municipalities in the province? And is this really an RMA issue? Or does it belong with some other organization or local advocacy? Because some of them when I think about RMA and the job we're asking, you know, them to do from an advocacy point of view, I think we need to put the brakes on thirty, twenty-five, whatever it is resolutions per meeting. So if you're adding even twenty per meeting twice a year, you know, the exponential growth of that, it's it's nuts. Um, the they need to focus on critical things that matter to all municipalities and we as municipalities need to have the courage to say no, this is a local issue. You need to deal with that with your own lobbyist or whatever. So that's why I put that here and I'll leave it to you to carry us through them.
Well, um, when we look at these resolutions, of course, these are uh from other um jurisdictions and municipalities. So um I'm not sure, I'll I'll ask council, do you want to go through each and every single one of these or are we prepared to uh deal with this at the time of RMA? Um, I know you mentioned you don't want uh people to go off on their own agenda. Um, uh, I guess more than anything, when we're doing the question and answer period, uh, that is an opportunity for for councillors to have some of their questions answered. So um I'm I'm not quite sure exactly where you would like to go with this. I mean, we can look at each and every one, but I think that that would be quite honorous. Uh, we have the information here. Is there anything, anyone that you would like to pick out that you would specifically like to discuss? I'm happy to uh for me personally, uh, I've read through these and and uh, ready to go for for the RMA, um, but I'm not necessarily sure our public wants to go through each and every one, but is there one you would like to specify that you?
I I kind of think that's the job, but um I do have one, but I would wait to hear from council first and because I don't want to hog the floor on that issue.
Okay, I'll leave it up to council. Does council have? Go ahead.
At the very least, I had noted a few that I'd like administrations. I'd like to ask administration a couple of questions on to see how they affect us in our municipality compared to the background information that was provided from the submitting uh municipalities, just to see if if we're facing the same concerns, or if maybe these things aren't necessarily as big of a concern here at home.
Okay. Please go ahead. I'm not sure if you're prepared for all of those questions, but please go ahead.
So the first one would be uh related to Resolution four twenty-five S, the reevaluation of wetlands policies to streamline road construction and improvements in rural Alberta. Through the Chair to Administration, do we feel that the wetlands policies currently in place are impacting our road construction schedules or are we just not doing anything to that extent at this point?
So Madam Chair, I you know what? I can't speak to that in terms of Athabasca County. I can speak to it from uh my past experience. Um, yeah, it's a factor and um it absolutely um can impact uh our infrastructure through a wetland. Um, the process is costly, it's lengthy and um we end up paying uh what's called wetland compensation generally to receiving bodies. Not all groups in the province are receiving and I know that one of them is Ducks Unlimited and uh um there's no guarantee that if you provide damages in your own municipality, that those funds stay in your municipality. They could go anywhere. So I'm very familiar with this issue. Um, I can't say how it has impacted our county, just my history isn't there, but um I personally do support this resolution. I think that we do need streamlining of that. So there, this one is well founded.
Councillor Anderson, is that do you have another one or?
I believe Councillor Hall wants to talk about number seven before I move down the list.
I I guess I had, I mean, earlier than that, even number two dash twenty-five, when I read through that um you know, the minister, the idea of a Minister of Rural Municipal Affairs to me seems like a glossly bad idea. You you I don't know how you end up with a two-headed ministry that there's ministers tend to be responsible for individual pieces of legislation. And now you have a minister, two ministers responsible, like it just doesn't seem like a practical, well thought out way to manage small government and to to keep a holistic view of of municipal interactions in it it seems to really be, you know, something that will add red tape. And as I read it, it looks like it just divides urban and rural more. And I I think we need less division and not more, so. I didn't really like that one. Um, I had number seven listed as one that I think warrants some serious conversation.
When you mention number seven, you're talking the proposal.
Seven uh dash twenty-five S, which would be on page one twenty-three, your agenda.
Right. You wanted to just read out what that is so the public understands.
And so that that is, you know, a proposal or a resolution that looks to um advocate to amend the Alberta Housing Act and the management body operation, but many, many of the arguments in that resolution are both uh misdirected, they are factually untrue. And it's it's got a lot of buzzwords, but it's not um it's not productive and it's not good fiscal management to do what they're advocating to do. This is a local issue that they may have in one municipality, but there's no evidence that this is a broader provincial issue. And so you know, you read about taxation without representation and I mean, tha- that was the rallying cry, I think, to begin the American Revolution and the Boston Tea Party, if I remember my history class. So there's a number of statements in there that I think council should understand because this is going to get some discussion, I'm sure, on the floor of the of the uh convention. The um the third paragraph talks about uh housing board members are appointed and not elected. I I mean, that's that's only partially true, but it's without context. Housing board members typically are elected to councils and then the councils appoint them to the board, just like we appoint members to the Waste Commission, the Water Commission, the Multiplex Society. So the housing board members are at some level elected and accountable. They're just appointed by their their council. So I think we have to look at some of these things and be careful with the the style of argument that drives you to a conclusion that isn't necessarily an accurate one. Um, where it um the fourth paragraph talks about housing management boards operate with autonomy. And the way I read that sentence is it's trying to portray that in a negative light. That actually is just good governance. Housing boards must operate with autonomy, commissions must operate with autonomy. And tha- that's how the law works. They are not an arm of the council and they need to be autonomous in how they make their decisions, just like the Waste Commission or the Water Commission is here. And so I, you know, the suggestion that it's a bad thing is is a bit of a worry. And now most of you will know that through my role on Greater North and in other involvement with our council, I've tried to regularly advocate for us to uh think about good fiscal responsibility and long-term planning, especially as it relates to the renewal of assets that we're entrusted with. And and really, I mean, we're, in my opinion, we're stewards of other people's assets and they come to us, we are to look after them and then hand them off to the next successor in as good or better condition. The Greater North Board, which would be affected by this, is has been working for three years to set up a capital replacement reserve that um will begin to build funds to maintain and properly look after the major capital items of the twenty to fifty million dollars worth of buildings. I can't remember the exact number, but it's, I want to say, you know, the the built infrastructure at cost was twenty-eight to thirty million dollars. And at the moment, there is no material capital replacement reserve. And I think it's it's responsible for the board to over a long period of time slowly accumulate money so that when the shingles need doing, the boilers, the um windows, all of those capital components that the funds are available to to look after them. Because these are properties that look after our seniors. They look after our residents and they look after, you know, eventually, potentially, some of us will will live there. And um so I would propose to you that that is just good fiscal responsibility. The the other statements in there that are factually just not right. Um, number one, it talks regularly and repeatedly throughout the thing about it collecting, we'll say, quote, municipal funds. And then also that um it disproportionately impacts larger contributors. Both of those statements are misleading from the perspective that it, number one, does not touch municipal funds. Housing foundations do not use municipal funds. They're just like the school board. They are separate requisitions and so to suggest like the whatever the housing board does, it has zero impact on our budget. And uh and so I I'm troubled by the 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 suggestion that that's the case. Um and um they're they're typically based on, there's a couple of exceptions, but they're they're based on assessment. So you know, a three hundred thousand dollar house assessed in any municipality impacted by the board's um collection area is impacted equally. So to say that the it disproportionately impacts larger contributors, there are no larger contributors. Everybody contributes the same. Um, and and so tho- those are the things that I, I mean, in a nutshell, that's the 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 bulk of what's what's going on here. It's this repetition of um, there's a there's a suggestion that creating reserve funds is not fiscally responsible, which I think is you you know, is internally inconsistent. It doesn't logically flow. And then a couple of other comments like poor governance practice discourage investment and reduce the profitability of local industries such as oil and gas. I mean, seriously? Uh, tha- that's a that is a a nutty statement if I've ever heard one. Now, like, yes, ten dollars will reduce their profit, but oil and gas, like a a minor tax increase will will affect profits a little bit, but not in any material way. Um, as context, in Wheaton County, who is the sponsor of this, their rate is ten dollars per hundred thousand worth of assessment. So a three hundred thousand dollar house is gonna pay thirty dollars a year to their housing foundation. That's it. Anyway, this is one um that I I think is is really a local problem that they're trying to make into a bigger provincial issue. I know there is not ministerial support for this, like the ministry does not support this kind of structure. The boards are individually set up by the minister where they assign who's on them. And um thi- this is one that I think is not worthy of RMA's attention, then I would encourage you to vote no on, especially because it just there's there's something not right with this.
Um, no, I we do have that opportunity uh to speak.
I I will speak.
Okay, I was just gonna ask you. So you'll be coming forward to speak about that then?
Well, and as the foundation representative, I'll speak to the the harm that that will create.
Okay.
And it's it's also it's a sensitive issue because we, in our own foundation, um, you know, we've we are very close to uh setting up a reserve. The motion that our council passed last meeting uh approved that and took care of some housekeeping. We have, we actually approved it, I think, a year and a half ago. The impact, I believe, on uh twenty twenty five's tax bill of the reserve creation is something like seven dollars per year on a three hundred thousand dollar household. So, you know, the argument that it's gonna break somebody is, I mean, seven bucks is seven bucks, but I I, you know, I spent more money on a bagel and a coffee this morning than that. That impact is is gonna be. It's good man, it's good management and we should be encouraging the housing bodies to set up reserves and encouraging them to do that.
Okay.
And typically, the minister sets out, you know, who gets how many seats. And I also don't buy the argument that's made in here that, you know, they they're getting bullied and that they need control to um produce good governance. As a board member or as a councillor, you individually have the ability to influence better governance practices at the table. And, you know, we've seen that around the region where, you know, the the governance operations, how we this council runs the meetings, I think, has moved more along the better governance line and Better governance line and, and certainly some of the other committees and boards I'm aware of. Anyway. It's um. It's a false argument that it uses municipal funds and I hope that you would. Vote against it and also speak against it. And um, and if you want, I'll give you a couple of speaking notes to, like. Email me and I'll give you a two-line, this is a dumb idea because.
But yes, we, as you said, we'll, we'll hear from you later, RMA um, at the mic, correct?
Uh, you'll hear, yes, I, I intend to speak because.
Fantastic.
The foundation is.
Which is, is the best form to, to make that argument for sure. Okay. Is there any others that uh? Go ahead, Counsel Anderson.
Thank you. Uh, regarding Resolution twelve twenty five S. Which uh, is about enabling service of offense notices for bylaw matters via ordinary mail. I just wanted to get administration's feedback on how that would affect. Our peace officer program. And if they thought that would be a welcome addition.
Madam Chair, yeah, the. The re- the resolution. Appears to be very sound. It, it affects us the same way that it affects. Lacon County who originated the resolution. So their, their proposed advocacy would align with what we would support as well.
Thank you. Is there anything further?
When, when I, and I, you know, I wouldn't get up to speak to this at RMA, but when you go back to page one twenty six, Resolution eight twenty five. Um, and maybe administration can provide some other background, but when I look at this resolution to oppose Water Act amendments and the lack of consultation. I guess I kind of wonder. As it, you know, is that bringing municipalities into something that really is outside of our expertise? And should we be, should we be just leaving that to the experts? I don't know if the C A O has any. Thoughts on that. Page is that?
Twenty six.
One twenty six.
Madam Chair, um. Perhaps this council hasn't dealt with it, but I know this has been a. Huge topic in Alberta for years and years, and that is the concept of uh, inter basin transfers. So. Their discussion item about uh, not enough consultation before making amendments to the act to allow that. I would. Certainly suggest that that's a significant issue for us today. Um, it could affect us in the future. Well, currently we're a region with. Um, sufficient water for our needs. There are other regions that don't have enough, so could they be looking at us in the future? Could we see pipelines to the south? Um, under the new Water Act. Perhaps it's allowed. Um, and so. The resolution is uh, probably would be reflected in concerns we might have here.
Okay, so it's a good one to be. If I could just piggyback on that through Athabasca Watershed Council and all the W packs across the province, this has been discussed. Over and over and over regarding the inter, intertransfer. Inter basin transfer of, of water and, and it is becoming a bigger issue just due to the fact that Southern Alberta is, is uh. Is, is very much looking at doing this and, and uh. And, and pushing and pushing to get stuff like this done. Down setups, different things like that. It's, it's, it's incredible what they're, what they're actually looking at and. And they're throwing out the warnings and it's, and it's a good thing the W packs are actually on. Looking into a lot of this stuff and understanding, having, having uh. Uh, contacts with environment and, and stuff like that is huge. And uh. Cause. It is being talked about lots. Not, not on the news, but background, yeah, background discussion is huge.
Without a doubt, I mean, having our E S V conference in Lethbridge uh, last year was, it was quite relevant, but even with the. That uh, fire and flood with the W packs up in the Grand Prairie area was definitely hot topics for sure. I'm just gonna break in for a moment, I. And, okay, so our delegation is here. Do you want to come back to this?
I think there's a couple others that might warrant a brief. Mention, I mean, I, you know, these are things that the organization that we're a member of advocates for, and I just, I think. You know, we, we can approve grants all day, but these are the things that impact the lives of the people that. The, where we live. And I, I think it's important, we have a. Robust discussion to say, do we? Have something to learn from, you know, the C A O's comments, help shape how I'll view that when I get to push my voting device on um. Tuesday, Wednesday, or whenever.
As well, there, there will also be compelling arguments during the RMA while people have that conversation where they're therefore opposed. And the, the speaker will also have uh, the opportunity. Um, for the people who put in their, their motions. So I don't recall doing this into this in depth um, prior, but. But um, exactly committee the whole would be. And of cour- of course, it's uh, after that, because this is, this could take up quite a bit of time. But again, our delegate is here, so uh, we'll just take a two or three minute res- recess while. Yeah, we're gonna table this one for sure. We'll be, we'll come back to it. Yep. You vote in favor of tabling? All right. All those in favor to table this item until our, our delegate is uh, finished their presentation. All those in favor? Yes. And opposed? Seven and one. Thank you. All right. Good morning and thank you so much for being here today. Um, is it Chelsea Kirby is with us here? Uh, we're doing a, a presentation. She will be doing a presentation on the Magnificent River Rats Festival Society. That's coming up and we'll start with introduction. So I'll start on my far right here.
Good morning, Joe Gerlock and the counsel from Division One, the Rochester area.
Good morning, Rob Minns, uh, Division Eight, Baptiste Lake Island, Lake area.
Morning, Camille Wallach, Division Nine, north of the river.
Kelly Chumsen, Br- Braslon, Prospeeda, Atmore areas, Division Seven.
Good morning, Ashton Anderson. I reside in Division Three, which is the Caslin Boyle area.
I'm Jordan Schenkelberg, I'm the communications coordinator.
Leah Blair, reporting secretary.
And Bart Beck, C A O.
And thank you so much for being here. I'm Tracy Holland, which is Division Five, uh, east of Athabasca, uh, Amber Valley and Paxton areas. As well as reefer the county. So missing and will be back was, is Counsel Capitanic. She's in Division Two. And Counsel Hall, Division Four. They will be joining us here shortly and go ahead with your presentation, please. Yes, please, okay.
Uh, good morning. Yeah, I'm Chelsea Kirby and nice to meet everybody. I know some familiar faces, but. Um, so I am the vice president of the Magnificent River Rats Festival. I've been with the society. For the last five years. Uh, Fred was supposed to join me as well. He's been with the society for six years. He is the president of the River Rats Society. So we've had some ebbs and flows in our society. Different members that have come and gone, but we've been, been pretty consistent uh, for the last little while. And we've moved in the last year to try and make the, the festival a free festival for our community. Um, because we find that it just draws more family members. Um, it makes it easier for them to enjoy the Canada Day events. They kind of come and go as they please. And we've had a pretty good um, turnout. So we'll kind of go through. What we have so far. Um. So we do have, you can see Dallas Arcan up, up at the top there. So I'm just in the midst of. Talking to his agent and we're hoping to have him back. This uh, this festival. So he's a great presenter and he's very interactive with the kids and he connects to the indigenous culture in our community. And we think that's important. Um, so obviously funding helps with the cost of security and stage production. You know, like our headliner, for example, costs about five thousand dollars. Um. Just for that and that's just for the one day and that's just one performer, right? So. We do try, like, but like I stated, we want to try and make the festival a free festival for our community, Athabasca County. As well as uh, we have lots of members from Boyle that comes. Um. And then the town of Athabasca as well. Um. And then we just very much appreciate what you guys already do for us. Uh. You've always done uh, the fencing for us and Public Works has really been at the forefront of us setting up. And your donation for that has been amazing over the years and we're very grateful for that. Um, obviously having a free festival brought out families with young children, donations at the main. Gate were accepted last year. June thirtieth, we had over fifteen hundred attendees. July. Uh, first, we had over two thousand attendees. Um. And we counted the attendees by wristbands. So we'll probably do that again this year. Or we might have clickers at the door. Uh, we haven't quite figured that out yet. But I think it's important because we do apply for some grant funding as well. Um, to know how many numbers we're bringing in and if it's worth it to keep out a free event or. Kind of getting that feedback from people. If they want bigger headliners, then. We might have to have a ticket price. Um, but people are quite enjoying that it's a free event. So we're gonna try and keep it there. Uh, so this kind of breaks down the volunteers that we have donated hours of seven hundred and ninety-two hours. Um. I did a calculation. If we were to pay all those volunteers, say twenty-three, twenty-four bucks an hour, it would work out to over nineteen thousand dollars. For the weekend. So it's pretty amazing. We have an amazing community of volunteers that come forward. Um. And work with us and it's really well organized. The volunteer aspect is kind of my baby and I've done it over the years and. Everybody's been. It's just, I'm shocked every year on how many people we get to come forward and enjoy the music festival. Um, we also have, like, we partner with, like, the classic cruisers, the art show, um. Watershed. Strawberry tea, United Church. So they're gonna be doing uh. A, a sermon on the first day for everybody and then the pancake breakfast. I'm not sure about the tennis ball drop yet. I haven't heard from them. And obviously the Chamber of Commerce, there's been some. Some stuff going on with them. So we're trying to figure out the whole fireworks and the parade. So if they're not able to do the parade, we aren't able to take it on, but I'm kind of hoping that some of the. Previous chamber or maybe Todd will still organize it. We're gonna maybe try and bribe them or something. I don't know. We don't really have the capacity to do the parade as well as the festival. We are willing, if the chamber is not able to, we are willing to do um. The fireworks. So I've been, been in discussion with Chief Shalapay. And we're trying to organize that um, in regards to liability insurance and stuff for that. So. Yeah, we've got uh, he's got a guy, Rob, that usually comes down to do it. So. We're starting to do that, just in case the chamber can't do it. I don't really know what's happening. I guess we'll find out on the thirteenth with all of that. Um. Yeah, we have many community partners. Home Hardware has done the Kids Zone for the last couple of years and that's been a huge hit. It's really nice to have families to be able to send their kids to. Have a blast for the day. The parents can enjoy the music and the entertainment and socialize with people. And not have to worry because it is a fully gated area and we do have. People sitting at every gate. So the security of the children are very important and at our forefront. But we also want the parents to enjoy the entertainment at the same time too. So. Home Hardware has been a huge uh, con- contributor to our. To ours. Um. And then we have the market too in Athabasca County, Town of Athabasca. Alpack has been a good donator. Uh, T C Energy actually just approved funding as well. So. They are sponsoring our security this year, which is great. They wanted to do that for us. So. Were able to get uh, security companies to come in. Protect everything at nighttime while the festival is closed. And not have to worry. Last year we had volunteers do it, so they were doing the night shift and. We had a trailer down there and they're camping out, but this year at least it'll give the volunteers a little bit of break and nobody has to do the night shift. So. We're very grateful for that. Um. Obviously, I stated, planning's underway. We did do the lineup this past weekend. So we met on Sunday. And we picked what bands are going to be performing. So I'm just in communication with their agents and their. You know, up and coming bands that are, you know, we try and bring in the new, the new bands to get them on stage and. Get them some good P R in the public eye, right? So we have lots of new. New entertainers coming in too, which is great to see that. Um. And then, yeah, that's it. That's all I got for you. You guys have any questions for me?
Thank you very much. Yeah, um, I'll turn it over to, to the counselors and, and just before I do though, a quick comment. Thank you very much for all you guys do to put this together. It's a very popular event and well received in the community and. Really appreciate the hard work that goes into it.
Thank you.
It, there's a lot of hard work that goes into that. So that's awesome. Does anybody, please, Counsel Capitanic?
Wow, I'll take it. Thank you very much for coming today. Um, I, I know that the um. The rave reviews of opening the festival up to being a free festival uh, were just heard far and wide. Um, and the fact that uh, more local performers could be showcased in, I want to say a more cost-effective way.
Yeah.
Uh, not because they're not amazing, but um, because it's like exciting to see your friends and family on stage as well. Um, and I know uh, one of the things like you mentioned, um. Or a, a little about the, the chamber. I'm not personally on the chamber, but I think one thing that we need to um. Remind the community is the cost of the fireworks themselves. Um, having been always sponsored by businesses and, and different ways through the chamber. Um, if that is a possibility that we may see that again, I, I don't know, I can't speak to that, but um, I know that uh. It's a little tight on all the businesses like everywhere and, and we all know that. When um. Prices go up on things, that's passed on to the consumer and that can become also like less um. Cash specific donations that businesses can make, which is what the fireworks um, require.
Yeah.
And so um, I guess what I'm, it's not really more of a question, but I just a, a shout out to. All the people who have contributed to fireworks in the past and that hopefully we can see that happen. And that as a community, we support those businesses so they can do those things for us.
Yeah.
Um, but you guys, as well as an organizing committee, um, supporting you in any way that the community can as well because. You're already, you know, working, volunteering, doing all the things that you do in the other parts of your life and then. Putting the rest of your time into this festival. Just want to really bring attention to that.
Thank you.
Not just thank you, but like remind everybody that they can help too.
Yeah, absolutely. All donations are amazing. We have about three thousand dollars towards fireworks so far. So. Yeah, yeah.
Awesome. Thank you. Does anybody else have any? Comments, questions? Um, I just have one. Uh, we do have, the county does have the, the grant for uh, grants to organizations. Is it something that you've looked into? To also apply for?
Uh, no.
Okay, so that's maybe we can get some information.
Yeah.
To you with regards to that. Um. Counsel Capitanic, you okay with that? With more information. So yeah, definitely something you definitely want to, yeah, look into for sure, Counsel Anderson.
Thank you. Um. I was wondering what your budget is. For this event, like total budget and what the. For this event, like total budget and what the town of Athabasca usually contributes.
Uh, so they usually contribute three thousand dollars. And then they also contribute three thousand dollars towards the fireworks. So they separate it. I'm not sure how their budget works, but they have to separate it. I think maybe because the chamber used to do the fireworks, so it goes to a different. Organization. So in total, if we do the fireworks, it would be a total of six thousand dollars towards the festival.
Does that answer your question? You're good. Okay.
Oh, sorry. I didn't answer the budget piece. Yeah, the total budget. So as of right now, entertainment I just did yesterday is. Ten thousand one hundred and fifty for just the bands. Security is the four thousand, which has already been sponsored by TC Energy, like I stated. And then for food, accommodations, the backline production. So sound and production is nine thousand dollars. So that includes the whole. Stage, all the equipment, everything the band needs to perform. As well as the sound guys out on the grounds, making sure that it sounds amazing. So that alone is nine thousand dollars. So I don't know, some quick math in my head, twenty-three thousand dollars roughly. To run it for the weekend.
Yeah, which is awesome. Thank you. Alrighty. Everybody, anybody? We're good. Well, oh, councillor Gerlock.
Yeah, I just want to say that I think that typifies what community activities should look like. And. It gives exposure to local groups, like it seems to touch all the bases. I can't do anything other than commend. The whole theory, the idea of a community celebration.
Thank you.
Get much better.
Yeah. And this is our twenty-ninth anniversary. So next year will be our third year. That it's been running. In the Athabasca area.
It's awesome.
Yeah.
That's fantastic. All right. I think if nobody else has any other comments. Thanks again for coming and being with us here today and providing the information that you have. That's fantastic and.
Thank you.
Look forward to the festival coming up and and best wishes with all the organizing that goes along with that. So thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Appreciate it. Thank you so much. We'll just take a couple of minutes before, if we could, well, three minutes recess while we say our goodbyes. Jordan, we're ready to go. We're good to go. All right, we'll reconvene and we will pick up where we left off just before we had our delegate. At seven point four of our agenda, which are the RMA Spring twenty twenty-five submitted resolutions. Councillor Hall, do you want to pick up where we left off?
I just. I was looking at nine dash twenty-five and I don't know if it was at RMA or at an AB Munis conference I was at, but I. Recall the premier standing on the corner of the stage and saying, this will not happen. And. The hard part is we all have these same challenges, but stuff like this worry is not a top ten for RMA. And it's just another burden and not a burden, but a. It's more on the plate that they don't need. We need, these are local advocacy issues and I don't even know what you would defund. To get money for this. I mean, the province has got a multi-billion dollar deficit like we're. I. I'm not convinced that that's there. I had another one marked that I, I think, wanted to ask to get administration's advice. The eleven dash twenty-five. The Net Zero Accountability Act. I just. Without getting into the merits of what they're doing, I just wonder if that's really an RMA issue as well. Like it's, I know this is a very particular issue that is. Some elected officials in the South are really passionate about. I'm just not sure that this is. This is an RMA level issue, but I I don't know if the CAO had. Comments or.
Madam Chair, there's. Really nothing administration can add to that.
And then the. I mean, I have thoughts about the unexpected meat, but that's okay. The the fourteen dash twenty-five. Which is a public interest oil and gas company. If ever there was an example of getting out of your lane. Like good grief, if private industry can't do it, does anybody honestly think municipalities will be able to run an oil and gas company better than oil and gas experts? Like. I. Like there's just. To me, that's that's quite a scary one. And I I think it's worth saying that that seems like a colossally bad idea, but maybe this, you know. Anything to add to my offer?
Madam Chair, I hadn't had CEO of an energy company on my bucket list, so. I agree with you about the concern of that. We have enough on our plate. Delivering municipal services to our residents. I can't see us operating a. Energy company.
The one that I really loved, which was the last one, and I don't know why that ended up at the last on the list, but is the decentralized provincial offices to stimulate economic growth. I believe the premier even spoke about ideas like that during her leadership campaign at one of the. And so I. That one seems to have huge potential. You know, we we've all are aware of the. The Athabasca University work that the lobby and the effort that went on to retaining jobs in rural Alberta and. You know, one of the comments that got made frequently in that. In that time was the cities don't have a prioritized right to all the good jobs. And it is precisely the role of the government, including the provincial government, to to set some of these things out in a way that benefits the rural economy. Because I firmly believe that, you know, we cannot have, a strong Alberta requires a stronger Alberta. There is no way around that. You cannot have a strong provincial economy without a strong rural Alberta and. These are, this is a really good way for the government to use their influence to. To help benefit rural communities. And we've seen it in La Colne with AFSC. Obviously, Athabasca University here, there's some things going on in Vegerville. It's just good news.
Thank you, councillor Mins.
I was. I wasn't going to bring it up, but I I will. Six dash twenty-five S. Improving Community Peace Officer Support and Safety is. Through the chair to administration. I think if I read that right, I I went over it pretty quick. What's our thoughts of our CPOs packing guns? Tasers. And all this stuff. And what? How much is it going to affect us if that came in that they could do that? Like, the training and all that would be immense. To be able to just even do something like that. To me, it could be another takeover of provincial police. All of a sudden, well, your CPOs can do this stuff, so. Hire more.
These guys spoke at Pembina District as well, I think.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I wasn't there.
There was a report at the Pembina District on. By a CP organization and. The chair of the district might be able to provide better information than me because of a better memory, but they they did talk about. You know, some of these enhancements being potentially beneficial to them and they, there, there's some study behind it. But I I too am curious on. Our administration's perspective on whether this would be wise or or would actually put them in, are are peace officers at greater risk?
Yeah, and exactly. That's what I was looking at is like all of a sudden our peace officers are going to be able to start packing. Weapons and stuff like that. And it's like, that's a, that's a huge undertaking when you start looking at the act.
Madam Chair, it's already a huge undertaking to run a proper peace officer program. You know, any of the measures that are designed to increase officer support and safety in general. We would support. Because of the nature of the business, there is a lot of red tape and there's a lot of regulations. But it's driven at keeping the public and our officers and others safe. So in that instance, you understand why there's red tape. It's all about safety, both our officers, but also public. So. No concerns with their resolution.
Thank you, councillor Hall.
I I was just going to add that I think, you know, some of this enhanced and consistent incident reporting, near miss reporting, and especially the. You know, live monitoring of the location, like these are all things that are, there's no reason to not be behind for me when it. Improves the safety of the people that that we ask to go out and and keep our community in good shape. So. It's.
Thank you. Alrighty, so does anybody else have any other resolutions they'd wish to discuss? No? All right. Is there a motion on the floor to receive the RMA Spring twenty twenty-five submitted resolutions as information? Anybody want to take councillor Anderson? Thank you. Councillor Anderson would like to move to receive the RMA. Spring twenty twenty twenty-five submitted resolutions as information. All those in favor? And no opposed, so that would be eight and oh. Thank you. Alrighty, the next item up is eight point one A. Page one fifty-four of your agenda, the community event calendars. I have a few if I may add. On March twenty-second at four P M, we have the pierogi dinner at New Pine Creek Hall. And on every Friday, between eleven thirty and one thirty, the Native Friendship Center does soup and bannock. As well, there is on March twenty-seventh. The Athabasca Native Friendship Center will be hosting a seniors yoga at one P M. And just a shout out, I have the multiplex calendar online is all the, another area of. Of checking for our really awesome events that are happening at that facility. Anybody else? Four, for New Pine Creek. Yep, pierogi supper. Yep.
Yeah, just a quick note, I've been meeting tonight in Atmore. They're going to be discussing possible changes to the. May second dinner in Atmore, just as a heads up, but nothing confirmed yet. And I have the same thing. The community events calendar for the Arms Board. Lots of really great things happening.
Anybody else? Alrighty, if we could get a motion to approve as amended. Councillor Chamsik would like to. Approve the community calendars as amended. All those in favor? And no opposed, so that'd be eight and oh. Thank you. Meeting calendars, eight point two, page one seventy-four. Of your agenda package. I might lose my voice. Alrighty. If it's okay, I will begin on this one. We have. A tentative meeting for community transportation at one P M on April twenty-second. And I think that that pretty much covers it for for myself. Does anybody else? Have anything they'd like to add? Councillor Anderson?
There's a Athabasca County Village Boyle Intermunicipal Committee meeting on April thirtieth.
April thirtieth?
Also, if anybody can come up with an abbreviation for that committee name, that would be fantastic.
And I'm sorry, it's your intermunicipal? I am C. There you go. I am C, yeah, for Boyle and Towns. Anybody else have anything they'd like to add? Nobody else? All right. Go ahead.
Twentieth, there is a. Steering Committee meeting for the, is it steering?
March twentieth?
It's it relates to the water line. I just can't remember the. The subtext of the.
Which steering committee, I'm sorry?
March twentieth.
And that was March twentieth?
Yeah, it's on teams.
Okay. A hybrid meeting. All right, councillor Chamsik?
I'm just April eleventh, Northern Lights meeting.
Northern Lights Library at time?
At nine, ten o'clock, sorry, ten AM Boyle.
Boyle, alrighty. Councillor Gerlock? Okay. Blue Heron on April fourteenth at what time? Two thirty. You're all getting sick. Already, anybody else? Last chance. Is there a motion to approve the calendars as amended? Councillor Gerlock would like to approve the count, the. Jeez, the meeting calendars for March and April as amended. With no further discussion, all those in favor? And opposed? Eight and oh, thank you. Alrighty, moving right along. Excuse me. We are moving to our reports. I just want to mention. How much it is appreciated when the reports are coming in, how important they are. If we can start submitting minutes and and whatever else we can to. Provide that information on what's happening in in our committees, that would be fabulous. I believe the first one, and I will turn it over to councillor Mins, eleven point one H. The Athabasca Intermunicipal Development Plan Committee.
That's the abbreviation. I guess everybody's seen the agenda that that was sent out to to everybody regarding this meeting with the attachments and that. And. We had a sit down with the town on on March fifth. Nine AM. Discussed. A A C P grant. Discuss the multiplex. There'll be more discussion coming in and out. I'm pretty sure it'll be enclosed. Yeah, it actually, it was a very good meeting. Everybody, everybody. Had some good discussion points and 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 all that. Emergency planning, collaboration together. E V charging network, that's where the town is actually getting involved with a committee that's looking at E V charges across. Across northern, I think it's the northeastern side. Of Alberta and of where where these could be put and stuff like that, but. Uh, yeah, that. And we'll be able to probably have more discussion closed regarding more of a community. My con report, please chime in.
It was a good discussion that gave us a good idea of the perspective of our neighbors and I think it was a really. Productive way to to start kind of laying the groundwork for future discussions and, you know, everybody. It reinforces it. Everybody's really working to. Figure out the right pathway, the right decisions for the long term in our region and how we can, how we can collaboratively work together. And I think maybe cleared up, you know, a couple of things where there was. The views weren't in alignment, we're able to. Align what we were thinking and it was, it was really useful and. Good.
Thank you very much for your report. Does anybody have any comments, other comments, questions?
Just one other thing, and somehow I became co-chair. So. And Reeve Reeve Holland, his, his. Assistant alternate co-chair, so.
And I believe it was Mayor Belay's co-chair for the town and the alternate was John, was councillor Measure.
Yeah.
Alrighty. I just wanted to make a quick mention. Thanks again for the reporting that's happening here. There's a lot going on with the multiplex. And that includes some concerns that have been brought forward. With the multiplex, um, and that includes some concerns that have been brought forward from the public. And their concern, I just wanted to kind of mention, it's a bit concerning, of course, with regards to some of what I, I. I would almost say is a bit misleading on the newspaper articles and other platforms portraying that the multiplex is in dire straits. Um. For me, I think the public needs to be uh rest assured that um the multiplex is not at risk, at risk. And that we're working very hard uh at coming together and formalizing um. The understanding between the owners uh and whatnot in arms that um is mentioned in the documents that we're seeing and um. All that work is going to be done, of course, through the um. The intermunicipal committee with regards to those um agreements and um. That work has started and, and has been ongoing and will continue, so um. I'm looking forward to seeing um uh those agreements coming forward when they're able and uh. Uh, rest assured to the public again that uh, that the multiplex is not at risk. Does anybody else have anything? Else they'd like to, go ahead councillor Hall?
Have you spoken, like, I mean, I appreciate you sharing that with all of us, but have you spoken directly to the chair? I'm, guess. That sounds like a conversation that needs to happen with the board first.
Uh, in what way?
Have you spoken to the chair about those quite problems?
Um, I'm just re- responding to the public and their concerns in the newspaper, and then in the conversations that we've had. Um, with regards to the uh intermunicipal committee, as well as uh what you had mentioned the other day.
The other, um, there was a comment made about submitting minutes to the reports, and I know that is the preference of some members at the table. I think that's ultimately a council decision and. Would like to say, as it relates to reports, I find a report far more valuable than a set of minutes, uh, to have. A couple of paragraphs that summarize the highlights is. For me, much. Much more useful in terms of the context and the things that are going on, so I really enjoy seeing a report like we've seen here or like. Versus uh, you know, just. Just an agenda package that's. Fifteen pages of, of reading that. Th- this is nice because when I'm reviewing the agenda. You can get a sense of what's going on over two or three pages versus, you know, a big bulky um. Package, uh, I have confidence in the colleagues who are appointed to these other things to. Filter them out and bring the cream to the table and let the skim milk go off on its own. So I'm, I'm happy, I'm happier with reporting.
Thank you. Does anybody else? Alrighty, is there a motion to receive the reports presented um as information? Councillor Chamsik? Um, no further discussion? All those in favor? Uh, no opposed, so eight and oh. Alrighty. So that. Motion I was gonna say, we're bringing into our in closed session items, a motion to go into closed is by councillor Mins. All those in favor? Uh, no opposed, so eight and oh, we are now in closed session.